That AJ, are you ready to go?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
I noticed how you subtly indicated that for us. I'm going to call the Springfield City Council Work Session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillors Pitts.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Bradley.
Here.
Stare.
Here.
Woodrow.
Here.
And Pictionary.
And councillor Pictionary is excused for the evening. We have two items tonight. The first one.
Let me interject. I've lost my video. I have my audio. I'm afraid to push anything to try and find my video. So I just want to alert you that I'm here, but I can't see anything. So.
We can hear you.
Okay.
Yeah, I can. We can see you too.
Catherine will work on your on your video while.
Thank you.
Going.
It's going to be a night of adventure. So please just be patient. If we have first items, library advisory board presentation on library fines with Emily David and Clyde Miller from the advisory board. So I will turn it over to Emily and then we can go from there.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and councillors. I'd like to introduce Clyde Miller, who is the immediate past Chair of our Library Advisory Board. And we're here to talk about library fines on overdue overdue materials this evening. And I just wanted to give a little background in that since the library closed in March of 2020 because of the coronavirus, we've not been charging library fines because of all the logistical and financial hardships that people have been facing. And this is something that a lot of libraries and around Oregon and across the country haven't been been adopting as just a part of their regular process is eliminating library fines. And the Library Advisory Board would like to see our library adopt this as a as a practice as well. So Clyde will present the library, the library board's perspective on this. And then we'd love to hear your questions and comments and and guidance on how to move forward. So I'll let Clyde take it away.
Hello, everybody. I hope you can all hear me. Okay, I'm Clyde Miller. I was the Chair of the Library Advisory Board until my term ended last week. And while I'm here representing myself, I'm also representing the rest of the board and our community. And I know we have a few other members in attendance, so I just want to say thank you to them. And now I'm going to share my screen.
Okay, you go right. You get ready and I'll Leonard, what was your question? You've got your hands up. And you're on mute. You're still on mute, Leonard.
Hey, thanks. I I really don't have any questions until Clyde gets through this presentation. Thanks. I'll lower my I'll lower my hand.
All right. Very good. Merrily, did you have a question before we got got started?
You were awesome.
Not until after the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, so I think Clyde, you want us to save all the questions till the end, correct?
That would be ideal. Yes.
Okay, very good. We're turning it over to you. Take us away.
Thank you so much. I do have a fair amount to go through, but I will try to go quickly. Yes, we, as the Library Advisory Board, recommend that our library go fine free. You can all see the presentation, correct? Okay. All right. So first of all, I want to start from a baseline. I expect that you understand this, but just to make sure we're all on the same page. This is a shortened version of the five fundamental characteristics of a public library, that the goal is to create equitable access and resources and basic information services for all the residents of our community. So fines for overdue items are historically common. However, they actually undermine the library's purpose, and I want to explore how so that we can have a full conversation about it. Firstly, there is the issue of equity. This quote here is from a longer quote from an article in Forbes about the Burbank Public Library. And while late fee may seem very minor to many of the people like here in this Zoom, it's not true for everyone in our community. In speaking to Emily David, the library director, she told of a patron who said they had to balance paying a fine against groceries for their family. And given some of the poverty level and to people living below the poverty level in our community, that sort of makes it inequitable. Directly related to that, library patrons who cannot pay a fine are denied access and much less likely to patronize the library. This is backed up by various studies and is true anecdotally. If the library's mission is to provide access to all the members of our community, I believe that this is a failure in that mission. There's also additional issues, the loss of materials. Studies have shown that fines lead to materials not being returned. These physical items have a very real material cost to us as community members and taxpayers. There's also the loss of availability. Even when materials are eventually returned, fees make them come back slower, not faster. So those materials are unavailable to other patrons that would otherwise like to use them. And finally, fees create sort of an antagonistic relationship between the library and its patrons. Knowing that you're being fined for being a day late or your child misplacing a book, when they're honest mistakes or or not, doesn't make anyone feel good. The feelings matter in this because it can create a barrier for the library's mission. In a report from the treasurer from the city of San Francisco and justifying their decision to go fine free, they quoted a patron. I would support eliminating overdue fines because when I owe money to the library, I do not feel comfortable using the resources of the library. It creates a sense of unbelonging. And I think that there's plenty of anecdotal evidence locally to support that general sentiment. And you might be thinking, what about the money? And I want to acknowledge this money is tight and anything that affects the budget is worth consideration. However, I think you'll see that the cost of keeping fines isn't actually worth it. A library card costs $95 a year to access library services if somebody doesn't live in Springfield. That is a fair price attributed to the value of our library. We pay taxes for the library, which covers our $95. This includes the building, scheduled hours, material services and staff. Assessing fines is functionally double dipping and charging patrons for services they have already paid for. In regards to money, in fiscal year 20, the monetary value of fines was only just over $8,000. The library was not open during the fourth quarter of the pandemic, so extrapolating, it would have been about $11,000 earned. The budget, as it was done prior to COVID, expected about $12,000. This amount, this amount in fines accounted for only 0.4% of our library's budget. Per our library director, a low estimate of staff time spent dealing with patron fines is 10 hours a week conservatively. Yearly, that's about one quarter of one full-time staff position dedicated to dealing with fines. There's also an actual cost in terms of staff time to work with patrons who've been assessed a fine, but there's also an emotional cost. Patrons expecting to be able to use services but being unable to can lead them to feeling frustrated and having negative interactions. And this is our library staff. It's not everyone, but it's just a lot of the staff. I just want to point that out to to humanize them. And as a side note, in doing research on our library, they're statistically understaffed. If you look at our population and tax base in comparison to other libraries in Oregon, there are fewer of them. So they're doing a lot with less than just about everyone else. I just want to point that out. All right. So staff perspective, hostile interactions with patrons affect staff and their service. Patrons often have to explain difficult situations like being in the hospital or having a loved one pass away in order to get their fines waived. This puts unnecessary pressure sort of on the staff to make a judgment call on people's hardship. And it may put the patron in an awkward position if they feel they have to justify why they can't pay a fine. These quotes are here because I really want you to have to hear directly from the staff and see how the tone has shifted during our temporary stay. And we don't have any hard numbers on this, but anecdotally, per the director, having a hostile interaction with the patron over fines can affect a staff person for the rest of the day and make them wary of interacting with that patron in the future. If the stress of a bad interaction can affect performance by 10% over the course of a year, I also want to think about what that costs in terms of hours. It's also possible, and again, no anecdotal evidence, but it could result in someone quitting. And if we consider that as something that may have happened in the past, even if it was never directly stated, you also have to consider the loss of productivity of not having that staff member, of having to retrain somebody. Just a possible consideration. And this is all on top of how their happiness affects how they act, interact with that patron in the future or with other patrons. All right. There is an argument that could be made for keeping fines as a way of encouraging personal responsibility and to benefit the moral growth of our community, and I want to address that as well. In considering personal responsibility, libraries have been utilizing late fees for years, yet even in 1983, a published study showed that there's virtually no change in overdue rates between fine and fine-free libraries. It doesn't bring materials back faster. Libraries can still suspend privileges without the added penalty of a fine. And fines are punitive responses and negative reinforcement. Negative reinforcements are actually far less effective, far less effective in creating behavioral change. It also results in building a negative relationship with the library. And we might ask then, well, what is the library's responsibility? Sarah Houghton, the Director of the San Rafael Public Library, stated that it's not the library's role to teach responsibility to any age group. The library's role is to encourage lifelong learning, exploration and innovation. When I think about what I want to see for our library, for our community, that is what I want to see. All right. So removing fines might seem like a significant shift in how our library operates. But this idea and acting upon it is not new, nor is it some big city idea, and I want to go over why. In considering the purpose of a library, the goal is that the service is used. It's not to make money directly or indirectly, but to provide a valuable service and make our community more welcoming. Going fine-free creates a cycle of positive reinforcement that serves that purpose. And after Chicago removed their fines, they saw a significant uptick in patrons renewing their library cards, which is a pretty solid indicator. And this is not an isolated example. Other libraries report a lot of similar findings, so that would not be an outlier. Also, I want to point out that we are not alone in this. This is a list of the other libraries in Oregon that have gone fine-free already. And there's a second slide of them. It was much more than I expected. This is it's a real cross section. The other libraries that have done it, rural and urban, large and small, wealthy and not so wealthy. This is just to point out that not uncharted waters and fine-free libraries represent 50% of all public libraries in the state, and that trend is only going upward. So the Library Advisory Board, which I'm here as a representative of, has come up with a policy that we believe balances the needs of the community with the needs of the city and the needs of our library. That should have been provided with you, but here are some of the big takeaways. I'll add a little bit just for clarity. For each of the three renewals, each renewal is three weeks, but there are no automatic renewals on held books. This is to encourage patrons to return popular items in a timely fashion. After a book has come due, there's a 30-day grace period when it can be returned with no fine or not like nothing to worry about. And we all are also going to try to make this, I'm proposing that this policy be transparent, very clearly stated to all patrons. And we say that library privileges should be reinstated in a reasonable fashion. Reasonable means this, if the material is returned in good condition prior to removal from the catalog. Good. If it's returned in good condition after the removal from the catalog, then that means they'll return the material and pay a fee for the processing. If it's a good quality replacement, they will also pay the reinstatement fee or they'll be paying replacement cost and processing fee. All of the fees that I just mentioned would be to cover the library's actual costs. They aren't fines or punishments. And finally, there will be a conscience jar that we recommend putting at the front. That's so that if anyone wants to teach responsibility for part of the family or to assuage their guilt, they're welcome to do so. So in conclusion, libraries provide access. The core mission of the Springfield Public Library is to provide access to materials to all the members of our community. Fines prevent access and have costs. Fines are inherently inequitable. And having and assessing fines costs our library and materials lost and plenty of staff time, way more than is earned in fines. Even if we don't get those items back, the math is still in favor of not having fines. There's also the hidden costs on our library staff's morale and reduced patronage. So it is this board's recommendation that we go fine-free. I believe that we have developed a plan and policy to address patrons who act in bad faith or patrons who destroy material or lose material. It's very much a marginal thing. It protects our materials and saves the city money and saves the sanity of library staff. We also think it's good PR and the right thing to do. And credit where credit is due, these are some of the references that I mentioned throughout. I also want to credit the the Library Board and the Subcommittee on Going Fine Free. So thank you very much for your time. I am ready for any questions you might have.
All right, Merrily.
Let me start off by saying I like this. I think I think it's a good way to go. I'm in favor of doing this. I have just a couple of comments I made as I read through the material. Our initial lending time is 21 days. Is that for everything or is there a shorter time for the for the most current books?
Emily, I may have to ask you to verify that, but I believe that is for all books. There are only like other materials that might have shorter time.
So there is the new books are two weeks and then all other books. And then there's some specialty materials like video games that are one week.
Right.
Yeah.
So so where so my my question came in with the automatic renewals. I can I honestly admit that I'm old school and I used to love to walk into the library and walk down the stacks and just have whatever might pop out at me or look interesting. If we renew somebody for automatically three times for 21 days, we end up with 84 days worth of somebody possibly potentially having a book. And I'm proposing the possibility of me having the automatic renewals just be two weeks instead of three. Only on only from that standpoint of possibly getting that book back into circulation quicker. That's the only. Yes.
That is actually addressed in the policy. If there is a hold on it because it is a wanted item, the automatic renewals don't happen.
I I understand with the hold, but if it's not, but it's just, it's just the idea of having a book off the shelf for that length of time that nobody else has access to. Some of them, some people, like I said, I used to walk the stacks. So there might, there might be a book that would pop out of me. It wouldn't be there if somebody has it for that length of time. So that's that's and and I will be making an honest confession, mea culpa. When automatic renewals come through, it allows me to be lazy in getting a book back. So that's part of the rationale I'm coming from is from my own, my own negligence in that regard. And the other, the other comment that I had was I saw on the prepared, the prepared material that with the explaining the policy of no fines. And the only thing that I thought of, and I saw it in your presentation, adding to that, just the line that says that there could be loss of privileges or there, there, that there was a consequence that that expected accountability. It doesn't have to be a 10-point list, but just so somebody realizes that even if there's no fines, there could be consequences if a book doesn't come back in. So that's, you know, I would just, so it's the transparency again, so that people recognize the whole, the whole process and it's in front of them in both, in both ways. But otherwise, I think it's a great idea. I like the idea, like the approach and 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 I totally appreciate not having to make the library staff have to confront somebody on fines. So yeah, that's, that was my comments.
Cory.
Yeah, I am absolutely in support of this. And as someone who uses a library and my spouse uses a library a lot, I know how much she has appreciated those automatic renewals. And you already explained the part that if there is a hold and a book is really popular, then you're not left waiting for it because you don't get the automatic renewal. So I appreciate the presentation. I know this is not the first time that we have broached this subject because I can remember hearing us talk about it before I was on council. So I'm just, I'm fine with it just the way it is, and I am in support of it.
Leonard.
Well, first of all, I'd like to applaud Merrily's embrace of the personal accountability piece of this. That's very nice. Also, I wanted to just ask, so let's say the 21 days see the lapse and then the 30 days go by and I still haven't returned the book. At that point, you're going to suspend my privileges. Do I get a text? Do I get an email? What what happens at that point?
So the majority of our communications go via email if possible. So you would get an email and then we would send a follow-up letter as well if the book still wasn't returned, just to make sure that you had gotten the communication.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Well, what I'm thinking is, you know, talk about an unpleasant interaction with the library customer. If they just forgot that they that they borrowed the book in the first place and then they didn't get any further notification, bang, they're suspended. I, you know, provided that they're given some sort of notice that they they need to return the book or they're they're suspended. I I think this whole program is a really good thing. I I definitely approve.
Thank you. We do try and have as many touch points as possible with the the patrons, but we do also remind them that their account is their responsibility.
Damien.
Hey, y'all. A couple of things. So I mean, personally, if the library board decides that this is what they want to do, I'm going to support it. However, I, you know, I know we saw a list of the cities in Oregon that have done it. That's cool. But all the data that when the cities that were mentioned were cities that have multiple libraries and resources. So I'm not sure to me that doesn't back up the reasoning. If you all want to do it fine too. I I I understand extenuating circumstances, but you know, I think personal accountability is something that is lacking in a lot of people. And if we allow people to tend to be lackadaisical or to really do what they want, it's taking advantage of us or you all, I should say. And it also doesn't send a great message. But then also, you know, and this is me, I might be reaching, but this is based on some of the the things that have gone down in Springfield. I can really see people coming in and purposely checking out books that deal with race or gender or sexuality and not returning them in acts of protest. And I mean, it's a shame that we have to think like this, but I mean, this is the reality, unfortunately. And so, like I said, if you also have to do it, I'm, I mean, I support it. I just don't know if the information provided to me doesn't really support the reasoning, especially when you compare Springfield to San Francisco and Chicago that have multiple resources. We don't have that many resources and, you know, there might be a place that has 20 books, but if we only have one, that could really potentially affect somebody's ability to do something for a paper or do some type of research or try to get educated about a certain thing. And I would just hate for that to happen because somebody is either petty or somewhat lackadaisical. And so I just hope that there's a way to kind of, I mean, I think it's impossible to figure out whether people are being, you know what, or just being, you know, or they just forget or they have extenuating circumstances. But I don't know, like, it's, I, I, I hope that people are courteous enough to return things if they are physically able to do so. But it to me, it seems like no fines could potentially reinforce that. I do what the hell I want, and I know you're not going to come for me. So I'm.
Great. Steve.
I'm, I'm fighting this. I'm old school. I remember when I checked books out and it was going to be a fine out there after two weeks. I got that book back. It was a driving force for me. And so I think that was important. I'm not, I, I, and I don't agree with a lot of the arguments you have, but I'm not going to go against whatever the group was. I'll go with you guys. But I have these visions of a check book being checked out and ending up in somebody else's library. And it's gone. So that's what I fear. That's it. Thank you.
Merrily, are you, do you have something else or is your hands just left out?
I had one more comment. That was, and one, one of them was in response to to Leonard, when yes, we get, we get notification three days before it's due. We get an email that tells us that the book is coming due. So there's lots of email exchange when you've borrowed a book. For anybody that's, it's got their email set up with the library, which happens when you get a library card. So if you have, if you have an email, so they, there is, there's lots of communication that goes back and forth between the library and the patron when they have, when they have a book. So it, you know, I appreciate Damian's comments. What I would like to add into that is that that could be a situation that would occur. But I don't think we need to address it at the moment. I think we just need to be aware in case it does. You know, and I think that if you look at the list of libraries, Oregon libraries, they're not large libraries. They're small and they're community libraries. So I don't, I don't see it as being as the majority of those towns having multiple resources in libraries. Majority of them are small public libraries, similar to ours. So in that regard, but I, I, I can see Damian's point and I can see him, I can see the concern. Like I said, I would rather, I would rather do what we're doing now. And if that becomes an issue, address it when it becomes an issue rather than, rather than trying to predict it beforehand because it may not happen.
Damien, did you have something else?
Yes, and excuse my ignorance in not having a, a library card. I'm a bad Springfield citizen. However, are there alternate ways that people are alerted? Because, you know, thinking about the digital divide and what if people don't have access to email? How will they be alerted? Is that even something that has been considered or do you all have something in place to make that happen?
Yeah. So people that don't have emails associated with their account get letters in the mail. And then, you know, at times with with problem accounts, we do have to call people directly. That takes more staff time, so that's kind of the last resort. So depending on how the account is set up, your preference as far as email or snail mail, you you get alerts. And with regards to the comment as far as the the studies, you know, I thought about that too, councillor Pitts, as far as, you know, there, a lot of the studies come from big cities. But the big cities are the ones that have the resources and the time to put money into big studies. And so we rely on, you know, their expertise and funding resources to get that sort of information as well. And frankly, if somebody wants to take a book from the library, I don't think fines are going to stop them. We get people that take books from the library now. And if they really don't want something, you know, want something to be gone, it's, you know, unfortunately, we've got a alarm system in place and try and, you know, catch people when they do, but it does happen.
Leonard.
Yeah, just real quick. I, Damien referred to a cultural divide, and I think the big cultural divide that we're facing is not between people who email and snail mail. I think it's between people who email and who text. And there's something that we might think about adopting at some point in the future is just texting people who don't have an email that's active.
Clyde, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I wanted to just address when you're talking about the digital divide. That's actually one of the reasons that I feel like the removing fines is actually works in favor of like, like trying to flatten that divide because if people are not getting or seeing the notifications and they are more likely to incur fines. And so in some ways, people who are less tech savvy or less connected are more likely to be harmed by fines. So removing fines actually becomes a benefit in that particular regard. Thank you.
Emily, do we need to take? Leonard, did you have something else? Okay. Okay, Emily, do we need to take formal action or is just simply us kind of head nodding is what you needed?
I believe it's just, you know, we're searching for the guidance from council on what direction to go as to whether to adopt the no fines or reinstate, so.
I have heard, it seems like you have a head nod to go ahead and go forward and do. And, and to implement a fine-free library. I think based on the questions back and forth, as you sort of get more experience, I don't know if you want to fit, fit it into a memo or if you just want to put into one of the other times you, you're in front of council. It's just kind of get, keep us updated about how it's going and the questions about, you know, things that we're learning along the way.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We really appreciate your time.
Thank you, both of you. Have a great evening. All right, next item is Mary Bridgette and she is talking to us about the council vacancy charter amendment.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here before the council again to continue our discussion about changing the process for how the council fills vacancies for elected positions. So follow up from our September conversation, the materials in your packet, I don't have a PowerPoint tonight. I just wanted to get input from the council about a few points in the materials talked about. If the council wants to look at having some more formal process about appointing an interim counselor or mayor. And, or if the council wants to potentially put a charter amendment before the voters to change the timing for the election. There's also some additional information about the process for each of those items. And then included in the packet, information from what the city of Medford does. That's an example of a community that has more process around appointing an interim counselor or mayor. And then Corvallis, interestingly enough, just passed a charter amendment about filling vacancies. So I thought that might be interesting for you to see. That's sort of the opposite issue that Springfield was dealing with and that they had in their charter, special elections for any vacancy. Happened to have, I think it was three vacancies that were either in short succession or overlapping and decided to move the other direction and do appointments for counselors, keeping the special elections for the mayor. One thing that's a little different about Corvallis is they elect by ward. So a little different there. I'm happy to either frame up the conversation a little more or just hear your input and then try and move forward however would work best for you.
Steve?
I understand that we can implement a process that maybe we don't have, don't have to have a charter amendment, but it's just as good as a charter amendment. I would, I would like to go that direction to, to just save us an election cost of election.
So you're talking about perhaps looking at some process around making the appointment that's a little more formal. So the public understands what that process would be.
Well, it's got to, it's got to be accepted by the public, but I don't think, do we not have to go so far as to put it in the charter? Can it be in, in our codes? So it's just, just like that.
Yeah, information about the appointment could definitely be in your code or in your operating policies. If you wanted to change the timing of the election, that would have to be a charter amendment.
Oh, okay. Anyway, that's, I'd like to do that if we can.
Okay.
Aunt Mary Lee?
I, my first, the first question I asked myself as I was reading through the material was, what are we trying to fix? Is there something there that we're trying to fix? Setting aside last year entirely, last year was so unique and so different and probably something that will never happen again in the same coincidental steps that it did for another hundred and fifty years. I mean, it just, it, it just lined up the way it did very uniquely. But as I read through the material, I like the possibility of framing a forty-five to sixty-day period of filling a vacancy with an appointment. I'm not exactly how, how sure how that would line up, but framing in a more formal way, the timing that would be involved as to, okay, we've received the, we've received the resignation or the, the filling of the loss of the person in the, in the seat. So how soon do we have to get a call out for applications? And at what point do we stop that call and we, you know, go to interviews or what? And so the timeframe for that, how that, how that would occur to the, to the timeframe of where the appointment is, is made. I would like to see that. And in the process of setting up something like that, having a timeframe in council for people to give their comments on, on what they think about that. They give a pub- public comment opportunity. So it's setting up a timeframe and having a public have an opportunity to make a public comment in regards to setting, getting that timeframe or getting that system set up. Along with the other, the other section of public comment. At the time that we receive applications or have a list of people who have put themselves in for a candidate, for a potential seat. Then there's an opportunity for public comment after that for the, not necessarily. I'm not exactly sure how to explain it, but just the opportunity for the, there's an opportunity in the council meeting for people to come in and make their comments on. We have at this time, when we felt, you know, we had that time period in the council. And I think that's a good idea to have that time period in the council meeting for people to be able to make comments prior to our voting and making the appointment.
Okay, can I ask a clarifying question? So the opportunity for the public to comment on the process the council selects or on the potential candidates or both?
The process now, if we, if we decide to go to set up a timeframe, give the public an opportunity to say, yes, we think that timeframe is logical. No, we think that timeframe it doesn't, won't work. How, give, give them an opportunity to speak now. Give them a, a, a time in council now to play, place their opinion. At the time where there might be a next vacancy next time, then follow a similar process that we did this time of having an opportunity for people to speak up in council and provide public comment on the, and any candidate that offers an application.
Understood. Thank you.
Did that clarify it?
Yes.
And before I go to Steve, Mary Bridgette, I had a sort of a clarifying question about the packet. You had forty-five days was the, the process that got us to Counselor Pitts. Is your opinion that we could, that, that we could go faster than that as a choice? Or are you saying that's pretty much as fast as we could go with an appointment process?
I think that's probably as fast as you could go. We had already been, already been dealing with vacancy issues before. So I think the council was already sort of primed to be talking about that issue. I think forty-five days is as fast as you could go. I can tell you what I've learned from other jurisdictions. Bend has thirty days. They feel like that's way too short. Other jurisdictions I've seen sixty and ninety. So just to give you a perspective on time.
Okay, perfect. Steve?
Mary Lee's suggestion, I, I like it as far as councils are concerned, but what about replacing a mayor? That would be different, do you think? It should be quite a bit different.
Yeah, the mayor position could be different. For example, Corvallis left, you know, you could see what they did. They left their same process and then had a different process for the mayor. One thing that this council could do is if you decide you want to have more process around making the appointment for an interim. You could then have a, and it's, let's say it's the mayor. You know, you, you can sort of anticipate if a person who is amongst the council is selected to be the interim mayor that creates a vacancy, right, in whatever ward that is. And then you could develop that process at the outset to, to kind of have the whole process laid out for the public. So they sort of understand what would happen. Or you could just have a different process for the mayor altogether.
Leonard?
So I, I'm thinking back on the, the process of selecting. I, by, by the way, for what it's worth, I thought the appointment of Counselor Pitts worked very well. I, I, I have no complaints with that part, that, that part of the process at all. Back last year when we were talking about the mayoral vacancy, we did allow a certain period for public comment. And I think to an extent, it actually aggravated the public's opinion of the process. Because in a lot of cases, they thought that they had voiced their opinion and then it was disregarded. So I'm, I, I'm a little bit, I, I'm a little bit ambivalent about this at this point. I, I, I think that there is certainly an argument to be made that counselor vacancies could be appointed by the council. I, I think for the mayoral vacancy, there is a, a, a strong argument to be made that it's such an important, such an important part of the, of, of the city government that it should be subject to a special election. That's where I'm at right now.
Damian?
I, I guess for me, like, I, I think about a time period, you know, maybe if the person, you know, resigns and, and the remaining seat has more than two years, maybe, you know, that can go towards an election. But I mean, any shorter, I mean, if the people decide that they want to do it, then great. But to be honest, one thing that I saw is that there are people who, if they had somebody in this position that they liked or that agreed with them wholeheartedly, they probably wouldn't be upset about it. To, as somebody who went through the application process, like, I stay within the boxes. And then it wasn't until after the fact, when I saw the other applications, that I decided to, a- and I was kind of coaxed to potentially email my resume to people, but I didn't attach it. And so I think we need to have very clear guidelines, even with, you know, this ties into the boards and commissions. If you have a space, then be able to, you know, bobline up front, keep it simple and cut it off versus adding more. Or we, we really lay out, okay, hey, this is, you know, resume cover letter. Or we say, hey, you got this space, you fill it out, you know, summarize. Which, I mean, is, is not a skill that a lot of people have anymore, honestly. Then three, I, I think one thing that we do need to think about as demographics change or as you have different types of demographics who end up running for these positions or holding these positions, regardless of how they get it. You'll be surprised at how many people might be here for a year, year and a half and will leave the city. And so we do need to start considering that because, you know, as ages decrease and people aren't as set or they end up not staying here, because, I mean, honestly, it's not all, all that easy for some of us. I think we do need to prepare, you know, really think about that. Where even though this was an anomaly, it could potentially become normal that people will run for office, plan on staying here and do the job, family or just being burnt out or mental health reasons decide to either resign or end up moving. And so I do think we need to be cognizant of that.
Cory?
Thank you. So I appreciate what Counselor Pitts said, the last piece particularly about just understanding that the world is shifting. So when we say it was an anomaly, I mean, I think we can just look around at neighboring communities. We can look around throughout Oregon and see that it's, it's not as much of an anomaly. And things could change in five or ten years, but right now, you know, people are moving around and we're in that sort of, that, that period. The other thing that I wanted to say is, I, I do think that the, the council process worked well and fine. And one of the things that was different that we, we also, we sort of screwed around, around the process that we have for mayor is who, who gets to, who gets to be considered to be mayor? And that was a lot of the feedback that was happening is that it was selected from somebody who was on the council as opposed to being similar to the counselor, the council process where people could apply. So I think that that's, that's where it, it, it pushes against what's the most democratic process. And I hear what Counselor Pitts was saying about, you know, wanting it to be really clear. But then I also, as someone who ran for office, I mean, it's, it's an inherently political process. And so the idea of appointment and the idea of running are a bit different in terms of what, what it takes and what is, what is asked. And so I think for me, having, giving the opportunity for people to be able to, you know, send their resume or reach out or do interviews or things gives that, makes it a little bit more democratic to me and that people get to weigh in, they get to find out who these candidates are. So I think those are, those are a couple of the things for me as I, that we just still haven't gotten to in terms of who gets to be considered if there's an opening for mayor. Is it only someone from the council or can someone apply for it? Because I think that's where we had a little bit of a breakdown around that. And then there was something else I was going to say and I totally forgot what it was. But those were the, those were the big pieces around that, I think, is just thinking about that.
Okay, Mary Lee?
Just like, just a couple of things. I, I, I shy away from special elections. But I understand what Cory's saying in regards to expanding the options for mayor. The only caution I have with that is I looked at everything that the mayor is involved with and responsible for and how much of a guiding factor the mayor is for everything that comes up. And we find as counselors, how much time we spend just on preparing as a counselor. And we could double or triple that in the, you know, in the, in the seat of the mayor. And I just have a caution of bringing somebody in cold that has not been part of the process. That's where, that's where I become comfortable pulling somebody in from council knowing that the, the first election in the biennium is going to put that person up for reelection or up for election. So it's not like we're pointing somebody that's going to be in there for the next ten years without the possibility of, of an election. But I just, it's, it, it falls into that anomaly. If we were, if someone from the community at large were selected to go into the mayor position that has not had exposure to city processes, city deadlines, the AIS, all the different parts. And then comes in cold, I, I, I'm not sure how long somebody would last when, when they had to brief themselves on everything that's going on. And, and on top of making decisions, having constant contact from the community, constant emails and phone calls. And I just, that's where I'm comfortable having it come from council. And if somebody's interested in becoming mayor, then get out there and campaign for it and get yourself on the ballot in the next election. But I just, the transition is hard enough when you're having to make a replacement. Then when, then making a replacement with somebody who's absolutely cold when it comes to what happens in, in everything that we have to get done and all the legal parameters that we have to follow. I mean, because we have to fall in line with everything that's, has been established for us to do in a certain way. So I, I just, I don't know, no, as I'm completely negative. I just have a real caution when it comes to pulling somebody in that has not been involved or exposed in the processes that we have to, that we have to follow.
Okay, so let's try to separate this and let, right? Because we have, I think, two tracks that are sort of developing and I'm looking at Mary Bridgette to keep me honest here. We have a sort of a council track that's sort of easier to get our arms around, I think. And we can kind of get, you know, sort of checked off the list and then probably some stuff about a mayor vacancy that we have to sort of hash out. So I'm looking for head nods and I'm telling, and I'm going to tell you what I think I hear, right? I hear people thought the council process went pretty well, not from a process perspective. And it also brought, got us staying in, so, you know, got us a good out, out, outcome too. And I hear that having some sort of basic pieces in the operating, in the operating rules are, are operating procedures around how, about, you know, hey, we need to let the public comment about the actual procedure. We need to adopt an actual procedure and then solicit, you know, public input about those, about those, about potential candidates before we decide. And understanding that it's probably going to be minimum forty-five days, maybe as high as like sixty or sixty-five days. Are, is that, A, is that accurate? Are people comfortable with that? Do they want maybe more process written down than that? And then we'll, we'll come back to the mayor stuff. I think it's going to be a little bit harder. I just want to make sure we're, we're continuing to kind of move the ball here. I'm seeing head nods. Okay, so do people want more process than that? Because if we, if we tell Mary Bridgette to Because if we if we tell Mary Bridget to put that into the operating procedures, essentially what we're going to be doing is simply saying. That a future council, whether it's us or anybody else. Will, you know, kind of write the actual details of the procedure, but it must sort of check off certain boxes. One of them is you have to hold a public hearing, right? Like, one of them is you've got to have an application. Um and one of them is you have to hold, get public input before you vote. And if people are good with that, then we can, okay, good. Okay, switch switching to the, I think, switching to the mayor topic, so. Leonard, why don't you go and then we'll figure out and see where we're at.
Well, thanks, Sean. I uh I I want to thank councillor Rodley for bringing up the issue of um. Whether the field would be open to the uh to the full gamut of um. The Springfield electorate, because I think that it actually. Served to create the impression during the during the the mayoral vacancy. That we were sort of pulling the ladder up after us. That there were, by limiting the field to our councillors. I think we were creating the impression that we felt like we were all the government that this kind that this city needs. Which created, rightly or wrongly, it created the impression that we were. That we pretty much um felt that no one outside of the field of. City councillors was capable of stepping in as mayor. And I don't, I don't think that that was what any of us felt, but it certainly created that impression. And so I feel like the I I I, in other words, I think what councillor Rodley is saying is true. That we should widen the field uh in order to incorporate the possibility of an outside candidate. There, there are candidates um in the in the city of Springfield that have been mayors, that have been mayors for. Cities that are bigger than this. And so I think that it creates the impression that we're a little bit arrogant by not having the uh the the full. Um field of candidates um that the city could afford us.
All right, thank you, Steve.
Real quick, Damian made some comments about getting people in there that. May not be here for long and and move on and and, you know, this is an important job, being councillor mayor. And and when I approach, that's a big deal and I'm going to be there for four years. That's my commitment to everybody. And and hopefully, when we, if we do some selection out there, who we do, who we select has that in mind. Not somebody who's want to be there temporarily, then then move on. And and so that now, as far as mayor is concerned, Merrily mentioned two things. One is uh, I forget what it was, but anyway, we we still have, we can still elect somebody. Go on the ballot and elect somebody who has no experience at all as mayor and put them in there. That'll be pretty uncomfortable for the city, but that can happen. And so I hope it doesn't happen. And and but when we do select from the council, we do know what we're getting. I'm not suggesting that, by the way. But that mitigates it a little bit. But boys, there's somebody out there can throw up, get on the ballot and win that election and and really mess the city up.
Um and before I turn it back over to Mary Bridget, I think there's a kind of an important thread to pull on. We all come at this from different roles. I think when people sign up, they are very much wanting to commit to be in here for four years. But the reality is, right, like, I'm in the middle of my professional life, um you know, and there's people on the council that still work, right? Something about your job, family, right? Everything sort of could change. So I think it's probably going to be normal that that we may see folks be like, okay, my job got transferred to, I don't know, Peoria. And I've got to follow with it. So, you know, but everybody, everybody starts with that plan to get here, stay here for four years. Uh Mary Bridget.
Just to follow up on the thread about the um. Appointing a mayor, a position if or how that should be different from a councillor. One thing the council could do is it could also have the same process that requires um. Uh going out to the community, public involvement, all those things also apply to the mayor. So there's, it sort of checks the council to not have that option to just say, no, we only want to select from self-select from this group. Um but certainly people who are on the council could apply to be, right, the mayor. And then like councillor Woodrow was saying, you know, some of those factors like experience um or knowledge of the city. You know, could go into how you weigh that when you make your decision, but still would require and give the public. The idea and the understanding that um even if you're not on the council, you could put your hat in, so to speak. For mayor and that might be a way to get at the appointment in a way that doesn't have maybe two different sets of rules for mayors and council. Some that that might be one option.
Um and Merrily, do you want to make your comment?
Uh yes, thank you, Mary Bridget. That that makes, that makes sense to me. Um I I that really does. The. Possibilities, there are possibilities for people out there, like as best as been mentioned, have been mayors elsewhere, have been involved in city government elsewhere. Um and and that would weigh into those uh applications and the interviews. And and so that allows that to happen. Um that doesn't completely just confine the options to just the city council. So I I'm fine with that. That that sounds like, you know, Cory brought it up too. I think that's the way Cory brought it up. So um yeah, no, that makes sense to me.
So the only thing, what I'm hearing is the the only change between the council process and the mayor process. We would require under sort of our operating rules is that the mayor process would be written in such a way. That it, no matter what, would be sort of open for a broader application. But we would still do the same thing where we, like a future council would write a procedure, write, write what they're going to do. Have a public hearing about it, adopt it, have some sort of applicate, require an application. And then, you know, before they make a decision, take explicitly take public uh take uh in-person public comment about it.
That's correct. I think um the way I'm kind of visualizing it in my head would be, you know, the language would be something like. When there's a vacancy of an elective office, the following shall happen. So it's elective, whether it's council or mayor. And then the nice thing about this is you can, you can kind of fashion the process depending on the position and the specifics of the vacancy. Instead of having this sort of rote prescriptive, you know, sets of hoops you got to jump through. It could be something that kind of makes sense at that time. That's also has public involvement and vetting, so to speak, about them kind of weighing in. Like, you know, that does make sense or doesn't make sense.
Yeah, okay. Leonard.
Thanks. Um so I um I I wanted to take another um sort of another pass at this. Um instead of, instead of mandating an appointment by the council. Um for for the mayoral vacancy, what if we had a process where we determined. On a case-by-case basis, how the vacancy would be filled. Um and I I think that we should always, I mean, my uh my my instinct is that we should always open up the field. To include possible candidates from outside the council. But I um I I do also think that we should throw open the possibility of not making it a council appointment. Of ha- of having, depending on how long the vacancy is going to exist. For instance, whether we should have an election or not. That's all I got.
I can just respond that in my research, it looks like there is some flexibility about. How and when a council makes an appointment for an interim person who may serve out the rest of a term. Or may, excuse me, run for election in that spot subsequently. Um but there, there's not a lot of flexibility for our council to say, for example. And maybe I'm not understanding correctly, but like in this instance, with this vacancy, we should have a special election. In this instance, we're going to appoint somebody. Um it's usually, um you know, you can appoint somebody for a amount of time and then and then the successor runs for election. So I'm not sure, maybe I'm not understanding you, but I don't think we have that much flexibility.
No, you you understood me perfectly.
Okay.
Um I I I wanted to find out whether it was possible to throw to to throw the process open on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, no, it seems like what I'm seeing is that we don't have that flexibility. The election, um the timing of the election is really a more of a charter voter of the people kind of thing. And that's, that's where you find that information.
Well, let let me ask you this, Mary Bridget. Is it possible to mandate an election after a certain um if? If there's a certain amount of length of time left in the term?
Yeah, so you'll see that, um you know, some, we're sort of in line with a lot of other communities. But some will say, you know, the election occurs at the next general biennium election. Or you might jump in to the next uh special election in May or in November. Or it may say, uh what Corvallis used to do is they said, you have to have a special election. And then they just had to call a special election and there's costs with that. So there is flexibility there about how community wants to handle that. The issue with Springfield in that is that would be a charter amendment and so that kind of starts that process.
Okay, well, that that being the case, I'm sort of gravitating toward what councillor Pitts was suggesting was that. I the the way I understood what he was saying was that if there were, say, um over. Over two years remaining in the term, um that 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 would that would mandate an election. And less than that, it would be subject to an appointment.
I think that that's what happens under current law right now, right? Because, because we hit the regular scheduled election. Uh Merrily. You're on mute, Merrily.
Just that the next election would occur in the in the biennium, the next biennium election. And I just wanted to comment that I think that's, I think that is important because that's when you get the most voters. You get the most public response. And I think that's one of the reasons it's in the charter the way it is, is because uh um. Special elections and and elections on the off-year just don't get the response. And if we're looking for public involvement, if we're looking for a true read from the city, that biennium election is is the best one. And it's the one that's in the charter. So I'm comfortable with sticking with the charter on that.
So um and I I would offer maybe one, one small tweak that we might make uh that we followed in the past. Is that um and and see if we can't get kind of wrap this up. Is that if I vaguely think, I wish Pish was here because he could tell us if if memory serves correctly. But I would be okay even going as far as, you know, following the same processes we had been written. Um but also if there was an active election going on right now, guiding, you know, the few future councils away from uh appointing it. So it would say something like, hey, if we were, if we had an opening 60 days from, you know, a regularly scheduled election. Then we should just wait, right? Because that's what, you know, that's what what we should do.
That makes sense.
And I don't know if the, I don't know if the number's right. I vaguely think most people use it like in the 60-day range.
Yeah. So that would, that would be an example. I'm sorry, I cut you off. Um did you have something else?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so that's like somebody uh had, there's a vacancy created, but their term is up quite short. I mean, it's not a long period of time. So instead of this sort of long process of trying to appoint somebody where you kind of go through all this. What you do instead is wait for the election to um happen and and let people just put in and run.
Yeah, yeah. So so we, right, because what happened in 2020 was by far the most extreme and.
Yeah.
And it had moving parts because you had multiple terms involved. Well, the other option that's the extreme end is the really short period, which is, you know, hey, look, we're in flight, something happens. And we're going to have that election in 60 days anyway. And what we probably want to do in that case is just simply wait, have the election and appoint the winner.
Yeah, and I will, um I can look into that. And then the only thing I'm thinking about that is what the timing is for having to put yourself on the ballot, how that works. So let me, um I can, I'll continue to look at that, but that makes sense. Okay.
And then, and then we can fit, we can have that conversation. I know you've got a big edit coming up with a bunch of operating procedures. So we can kind of go through the line by line as when when you kind of put all the virtual meeting things and uh. Uh you know, other elements together, because we're going to end up having a big conversation about it.
Okay.
Steve.
Just one thing, whatever we do, I'm a public input. I'm with the public to be able to.
Okay.
To have a say in what we're doing. It's really important. I want to hear from them.
Okay, so it sounds like we've got good direction on the council side, good direction on the mayor's side. And I'm going to make sure that um so Mary Bridget, maybe could you give us the like 90,000-foot view?
Okay, um yes, I can. So what I am understanding is that the council is interested in looking at. Um developing a process for uh the selection and appointment of an interim councillor or mayor. That incorporates public input on the process and the potential candidates. Um and that also um is not prescriptive, where every vacancy is handled the same way, but has some flexibility. But does require the council to adopt a process publicly, so it'd have some public scrutiny. Most likely parts of that would be um, you know, public input, the a standard application process. Maybe interviews, committee, or depending on how the council wants to fashion it for that particular vacancy. That would also be the same for the mayor. We might have a, I don't know if safe harbor is the right word. But we might have an exception for a vacancy that's created at the very end of someone's term. So we can just use the already happening election process to elect somebody. So we're not appointing someone and then having an election very short after. Um, does that sound right?
I think you got it.
Okay, I have two, just real quick follow-up questions, just to make sure, um that would help me now. Um some communities require for a nominate, um require nominations for appointments. They they want people who are interested, not only to fill out the application and, you know, sort of put their name in there, so to speak. And I just didn't know what you guys thought of that. Um.
Oh, that would be the similar to getting on the ballot where we have.
Yeah.
Five signatures.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But I don't know what you, okay, I thought it's a virtue, but I just, I didn't.
I I'm seeing.
Okay.
I'm I I'm good for not having to do those to get on the ballot, so.
I know, that's what I figured. I was like that. I just wanted to make sure. And then um. Are you, in terms of time limit, is is the council have an interest in saying to the council, whatever council this is, when this, you know, they've dealt the next vacancy? Hey, you got to start this process with a certain amount of time, within a certain amount of time, or you have to get it done within a certain amount of time. Does that make sense? Like, there are two time things you could do. You could just say, hey, I don't care how you do it, come up with a process. Do it in 60 days or 90 days, or come up with a process and you need to start it within 45 days of the vacancy or something.
Uh my thought would be to have it done by. I mean, I think that's what people are going to care the most about. It's like, what what what's the end result?
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Um if we're going, if we would go done by, I think we've got a, we've got a write it in a way that's more like 90 days.
Okay.
Like, most of us, if we ever do do this again, are going to want to get it done as soon as possible. But I want to acknowledge, you know, if we had it happen over summer break or something like that, you know, there could be, there could be a weird sort of setup there.
And it's the ceiling, you know.
Yeah, because one of the things that happened when when John passed was so unexpected in April. That Fred came back in and filled, he was previous councillor, he filled in for the rest of the year, just that not as a, anything other than just a fill-in. Um for the rest of the year. And then the election occurred the following year. So that that's a a unique situation too, but that allows for that timeframe, the 90 days. Um and some kind of blip that happens in the middle of it that can be taken by surprise.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Well, I think that was our last item. So thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night.